Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December 14th session of the Bellingham City Council. We don't have any announcements tonight, and this is our last meeting of the year. That's the only announcement. So now we will have a pledge of allegiance. Would Councilman Weiss lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance, issued by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Terry Borneman.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jean Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Liloquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
She's excused.
Thank you. Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Jack Weiss.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to the comment period, and if people are here to come up and say things about Jack, we'll do that as soon as we get done with a couple of resolutions. So Jack, you want to do the first resolution, which is a resolution recognizing Julie Guy.
Can you pop some wheelies?
You walk faster than I do.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks. So Julie had a little celebration last month with the Neighborhood Association in Cordada. And one of the stories that I shared with her and with the group was about the fact that, I'd say probably about five years ago or so, I was getting beat up by the council at that time quite a bit. It was not a very fun time for me. And it was also coming up on a time of whether or not I should go and run for a second term. Julie, on her own, you know, I kind of keep things to myself as much as I can, but Julie figured it out. And she gave me a call, invited me to lunch, and she sat me down and really kind of explained to me, I think, the value of being on the council and what I could do in a second term. And I really, I credit her for me serving for a second term, you know, and was able to go and do, I think, some good things during that time. And so I've had on my refrigerator a saying here from a guy named Enrique Rodriguez that I wanted to read to you. And it's been on my refrigerator for probably 20, 30 years or so, but ever since that time that Julie went and called me, I think of her whenever I see this on the refrigerator. And it says, "When you're dreaming that you can improve your life in the lives of others is when you're the human, when you are, when you as a human being are at your best." And I thought that it really, really was something that I really think about Julie. She's, she really has quite a storied history in her career as an individual. We only know of her in Bellingham, but she's done a remarkable number of things at other times and other, especially in Alaska, I guess. It's been where you did most of your work, but.
And Hollywood, too.
And in Hollywood, too. Now we know. So I have a resolution that I wanted to read that's from the council and from Mayor Kelly. And it's a resolution recognizing Julie Guy for her outstanding contributions to the Cordada neighborhood in the city of Bellingham. Whereas Julie Guy served on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from September 13th, 2006 through July 3rd, 2013. And whereas, as a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board member, she advocated for parks in North Bellingham. And whereas Julie participated in the Steering Committee for the Cordada Park Master Plan, the Steering Committee for the 2008 Update of the Park Recreation and Open Space Plan, and the Planning Committee that created the North Bellingham Trail Plan. And whereas she was instrumental in forming the Friends Group that conducted the, I'm sorry, a design charrette for Van Wick Park. And whereas Julie has been active on the Cordada Neighborhood Association, most recently serving as the association president since 2013. And whereas she has represented the Cordada neighborhood at the mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Commission. And whereas her contributions to the quality of life in Cordada have been much appreciated by her neighbors. And whereas Julie has worked closely with city elected officials and staff to solve problems effectively, developing friendships along the way. And whereas Mayor Kelly Linville and her administration are grateful for Julie's influence in making Bellingham an even better place to live. Now therefore, the City Council of Bellingham resolves the following. The city of Bellingham appreciates Julie's friendship and her contributions to our city. Thank you, Julie.
We need to vote on this resolution, so is there a motion for the resolution?
Oh, make a motion.
So moved. Motion been made in second. Any discussion? We're going to vote, and then you can talk. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries seven zero, six zero, excuse me. Okay, Kelly, you're up.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I met Julie and her cohorts about four years ago. And I'll tell you, I want to say something that has stuck with me since the first time I met Julie. First of all, she's not afraid of saying what she thinks. I appreciate that in people. She also says it with a smile on her face, which I also appreciate. And I think that's why she's been so successful, is she understands that sometimes, what's the saying, the perfect gets in the way of the good. And she has been a dogged leader. And that's a compliment for me, for making a difference in the whole city, but also your neighborhood, Julie, and I really appreciate it. Your pleasure to work with. You're welcome.
Why the two guys standing there?
Oh, great. Oh, thank you. Hi there. I'm already getting to know you, but thank you very much. Oh. Thank you. All these hugs, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for all of you.
Yes, you too.
Okay. Is it turned on? I guess it'll be a little closer. That's all right. Is that good? Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Well, I want to tell you that I am extremely honored, and I had no idea what was going to happen tonight. Jack just told me to be here, so I said, okay. So I had to figure out how to get here, and my good friend Diane Tudor volunteered to come on the WTA bus with me. So she'd never been on that bus before, and that's gotten to be my home lately. But all of this about parks is so fabulous, and I have, I'm a third generation in my family that's advocated for parks. And so being able to do it here and looking forward to the Cordada Community Park that Leslie and her people, and congratulations, Leslie, on your new position. It's going to be great. And so I've been pushing for parks, and the reason is that it creates a community, and everybody knows that. And so we just need that in the north end. And I think when you see, two or three years from now, or maybe four years, when the Cordada Community Park is finished, you're all going to be just incredulous. It's going to be beautiful. And so I'm looking forward to that. And thanks again for the honor and just amazed to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, your excuse. Where are you going, Mr. Weiss? You've got to come back over here, because now we're honoring somebody whose last meeting is tonight. Come on over here, Mr. Weiss. That don't happen very often, I can tell you that. No, I just want to take this opportunity before I read the resolution to thank Jack for all his years of service, eight years on the Bellingham City Council. When he mentioned things were pretty rough five years ago, I was probably on the other end of that, giving him a hard time. Him and I debated each other for years, but it was always for the good of this community. And there never once were we just disagree to be disagreeable. We always got along. He's been a great friend, not only on the council, but outside the council. You know, you spend a lot of time together, often spend more time with council people than do your own family. And maybe that's why people don't run for office too much in this town, because it is one heck of a commitment. And I think, by God, eight years, you know, that's a long time, but it's been 22 for me, and I've counted back over the years, and I've served with 22 different people. And it's always sad when one of them decides that they don't want to run again. And anyway, I just want to thank you for all your years, and for your years before you even got on council. Now I will read the resolution. Jack Weiss has served on the Bellingham City Council for eight years. And whereas Jack always stuck to his core convictions and never wavered, and Jack was very detailed and always prepared for the meetings, and was a tireless advocate for social justice. And whereas Jack's leadership and persistence resulted in the newly unveiled Rental Registration and Safety Inspection Program in an effort to make all housing in Bellingham safe. And whereas Jack has always been a staunch supporter of Greenways activities, both as a council member and Greenways Advisory Committee before that. And whereas Jack has served on the council's Planning Committee, Parks and Recreation Committee, Lake Watcom and Natural Resources Committee, and Public Works and Public Safety Committee. And whereas Jack has represented the city and its citizens on numerous advisory boards, including the Bellingham International Airport Advisory Committee, the Board of Trustees of the Bellingham Library, and the Watcom Transportation Authority Board of Directors. And whereas Jack's consistent advocacy regarding the waterfront resulted in improved plan. And whereas Jack was a leading advocate of creating the Bellingham Transportation Commission, which was instrumental in initiating the city's bicycle and pedestrian master plans. And whereas Jack is a leading supporter of urban villages and Barclay Village. And always quality infill. I'm sorry, I just added that on. I had to do something. I just thought I'd throw that in. And quality infill development to create housing for the future and fight urban sprawl. And whereas Jack advocacy for bike and pedestrian safety resulted in the creation of a continuous bike lane connecting downtown northwest neighborhoods and the community colleges. And Jack served on the council's PEG TV Working Group and helped catalyze the formation of the city's new public access programming, Access Bellingham. And whereas Jack was an exemplary record of prior public service that resulted in the establishment of the first curbside recycling program in Watcom County and the creation of the successful's Greenway Three Levy. And whereas the council is hopeful that Jack will continue to be active in community issues and now, and is certain that the city of Bellingham will be better for it. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Bellingham, the City Council hereby expresses its appreciation and honors Jack Weiss for his leadership, public service, and dedication to the citizens of the city of Bellingham and to our wider community, and I so move. Second. Motion been made in second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just.
Uh-oh.
Got to say a few words about Jack, because, you know, when Jack came on, you know, we weren't always the great buddies that we are right now. You know, we had some rough moments over some issues, but Jack finally came around, you know, the Hundred Acre Woods, once we bought it, he finally came around to that, and everything was set aside. But I do, I have always admired Jack for his convictions of principles, where some folks stick their finger in the air to try to figure out how they should vote on an issue. That's never been Jack's problem. Jack has always voted from conviction, from his set of principles, and I really admire that. I don't, and we can disagree on certain issues, but I really think sometimes disagreeing on issues makes the resolution of it stronger by finding, by finding commonality, and you can make it stronger. And I think over the years, on some of the issues we've worked and butted heads with a bit, that happened, at least I hope, for the citizens of Bellingham. And for many, you're going to be missed here. You've been a real strong voice on a lot of issues, and I know I'm going to miss working with you. I'm going to miss your intellect, because it's very sharp. I've appreciated your ability to do in-depth research. It's, you know, it's helped this council, and you'll be missed. So don't be, don't be like your predecessor. Don't be a stranger.
Dan.
Jack, I just wanted to thank you for your leadership on a few issues, the rental registration. I think that your tireless and long leadership on that made our community a better place to live. You show leadership in a very distinct way when it comes to protecting our environment and working on behalf of people who don't really have a voice politically. I also wanted to thank you for helping me as a new council person. You were a tutor to me, and you showed up at community Neighborhood Association meetings to help me along. And I just want to thank you for helping me be a council person that I want to be. And I just really want to express my sincere appreciation for your leadership. Michael.
I want to say something very similar. Very grateful that you helped me start out as a council member. You were a good source to help me find my bearings, and the other council members who were here before me. I really appreciated that. You've pushed me as a council member, and you've pushed the council, and every time, I think it's always been for the end result. I haven't always given you what you wanted, but it was always hard to say no, because you meant it, you believed it, and I listened to you because I respect you and I like you as a friend. Thank you.
Pinky.
Jack, same. I really want to thank you for your leadership. You're always so thoughtful. You're always so well-prepared. And even before I started on city council, you were a strong political advisor, and you are very politically astute in this community. You pay attention to all the things that's going on, and I really admire that about you because it's important to you, and you put your heart and soul into it, and it's obvious. So thank you for your leadership.
Mayor.
Well, Jack and I have said our personal goodbyes last week, but Jack, you don't have to tell everybody.
She had a countdown clock on.
Jack and I have known each other for a very long time, when we were both in different jobs and over the course of changing into elected officials. So I want to say that everything that people have said is absolutely true about Jack. I believe that Jack acts from convictions, and he reads everything. I think, Michael, you read everything, too. The rest of you have something to aspire for, but.
My goodness.
Or not. It's up to you.
Keep going.
All right. I just want, no, I just want to say that Jack and I haven't always agreed. In fact, sometimes we haven't even gotten along. But over the course of the last few years since I've been mayor, I think that I have enjoyed our monthly meetings. We talk about everything under the sun, and I can say that when Jack and I discuss an issue, especially one we don't agree on, it's always done civilly, and I really appreciate that. So the other day, when he voted with my opinion on something, I gave him a big hug, because I was kind of pleased about that. Anyway, you are, your personality and your tenaciousness is going to be missed, Jack. And I know you have a one-way ticket to Hawaii, but please come back.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries seven zero. There's a six zero, so there's a copy of the resolution, and here's a little gift from the council. You go ahead and open it. Yes, coffee. No, it's not coffee. It's not coffee. For those of you that don't know, he's allergic to coffee. We would never do that. It says. Go ahead. It says, "City of Bellingham, Washington, in honor of dedication of Jack Weiss, Bellingham City Council, 2008-2015, our community is a better place because of you." You're up, man. You can go now, Julie. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, there's some people that here that came specifically tonight to say thank you. So Betsy Pernado, Charles Law, and anybody else that wants to line up against the wall there.
Betsy Pernado, Alderwood Avenue in Bellingham. Well, Jack, I wanted to come tonight because I really wanted to give you my heartfelt thanks for all of your service on the council. And there are a number of issues I was thinking about in particular. I think it was soon after you came on the council that I started to realize just the amount of work you put into issues and researching them. And it was the issue when Costco asked to expand its square footage by 2,000 square feet. And I remember you told the council that you went out there and talked to employees and discovered that they really didn't need 2,000 square feet, that 500 square feet would be enough, and that you voted against that. And I was so impressed that you had done that research. And I've seen that in other things, too. The work that you did on the waterfront, I felt like I learned so much from you in conversations that we had. And I appreciate that it seemed at times you were a lone voice slogging along, but I really appreciated your integrity and that eventually that you did vote against that plan that the Blue-Green Waterfront Coalition had thought was flawed. Also, I wanted to thank you for the work that you did on the rental registration. You showed incredible leadership. You paid a great deal of attention. You got input from, it seemed like, hundreds of citizens. And it was a wonderful thing that you were able to do that and with the rest of the council pass a rental ordinance that makes rental housing safer in Bellingham. So thank you very much for all you've done. We will certainly miss you on the council, and maybe you'll think about running for elected office in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Charles Law.
First of all, I'd like to acknowledge that we are on Coast Salish land, and Jack's well aware of that. Jack Weiss, what can I say? Everybody said everything. The problem I see in this whole thing is your work's not done yet. You've got more to do. You just started out. Just as Jean said, you know, 22 years, eight years, it's a drop in a bucket. You can get a ticket, round trip. Consider that. And as Betsy Pernado said, we'd love to see you running for another office soon in Watcom County. Thanks, Jack. Thanks for all you did.
Thank you, Charles.
I'm Eric Hirsch from Bellingham. I first met Jack on the Greenway Advisory Committee probably close to 10 years ago, and I followed his career as a member of city council. And while I very much agree with Jack's policy preferences, the main reason I want to congratulate you and admire you for your service on city council is my sense of your healthy skepticism. You're willing to pay attention. You do follow up on the details, and mostly you look at things with a critical eye, not a cynical eye, but with a healthy sense of skepticism. We've got a very effective and competent city government here. I think the mayor and the managers of the city departments and the staff are all very competent. Nevertheless, it's the job of the legislative branch, the council members, to poke and prod and make sure that what the staff is proposing really makes sense, and not just accept, oh, those guys are the professionals, they've been doing this all their lives, they know what they're doing. And I really appreciate your willingness to take on that role, which can be at times, as Kelly said, very uncomfortable, but I think it's absolutely essential. We can't let these guys who think they're running the city tell the policymakers what really ought to be going on, and I applaud all you've done. I also agree with the others who say, you know, we could raise money very easily to bring you back from Hawaii in, say, a week or so, in time for the first meeting in January. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Turn the clock on, Elizabeth. No, just kidding. Go ahead.
Stan Snap for the record. You want to hear when I was born? No, you don't. Jack and I met in 1997, when we were both appointed to the Greenways Advisory Commission. And we've been friends all this time, and really good friends, besides just all our elected work. But in early 2007, Jack and I got together and figured out who we thought ought to be on a couple new members of the council. There were two openings. And so we set up a lunch with the two candidates that we had in mind. And you remember this, Jack? Had this lengthy lunch, and at the end of the lunch, the two of them had both squirmed out. I won't name who they are, but you all know them. And Jack and I found ourselves running for council, which neither of us had intended to do. We had a good, a good plan worked out, and we never dreamed that we'd end up. I spent six years with Jack on council, and first thing he said to me tonight was, I beat you by two years. I got eight years on. It's always been that kind of friendly competition with us. But we worked on Greenways together. The last Greenways got very contentious, and a large group worked on putting it together, and then another group came forward, and we had a lot of controversy between us. And Jack would just go home from those meetings and hit the books. He'd do the stats, he'd run the numbers, he'd put up the arguments, he'd lobby people, and we came up with an agreement that we got the city council to put on the ballot and passed a Greenways levy. And I'm sorry Julie isn't still here, because one of her latest efforts is to work on a Greenways Four levy. And the first two couple people that she called, well, three, I think John Blutham was the first one, and Jack and I were second and third. And so I found myself again at meetings with these guys, and you just can't get away. You try and retire, it's hard to do. I think the main thing, Jack, that I've always admired is the work that you're willing to put in. You've kept stats at home on every council vote that we've ever made, and you've reminded me of the ones from where I was wrong, and, you know.
Yeah.
But you do the work, and I think this council is really going to miss, miss the legwork, the walk, the talk that Jack has always been noted for. And you're not going to replace him, that's for sure. So thank you, Jack. I'm sure our friendship will continue. I'll be happy to come to Hawaii. Just send me a ticket. Thanks.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you, George Dyson. I can say everything I need to say in one sentence to those of us on the Bellingham waterfront. Jack, you were the voice in the wilderness, and we thank you forever for that. And keep at it. Don't give up. Thanks.
Thank you, George. Anybody else? Okay, we will now take a short, oh, Jack. Oh, now, now he wants to say, now he wants to. The floor is yours, Mr. Weiss.
What's that?
The floor is yours.
Thank you. And I didn't, I purposely didn't speak this afternoon so I could get just a little bit of extra time for tonight. Sure. So the one person that's not here tonight, that, outside of Roxanne, but the one person that wasn't able to make it tonight was my successor, April Barker. And I thought that my words probably would be best served by talking to her, and so I'd like to read a letter to her that might go and help kind of describe some of my feelings. Dear Councilmember-elect Barker, first of all, congratulations on your stellar and hard-fought. I think the main thing, Jack, that I've always admired is the work that you're willing to put in. You've kept stats at home on every council vote that we've ever made, and you've reminded me of the ones from where I was wrong and, you know?
Yeah.
But you do the work, and I think this council is really going to miss the legwork, the walk, the talk that Jack has always been noted for. And you're not going to replace him, that's for sure. So, thank you, Jack. I'm sure our friendship will continue. I'll be happy to come to Hawaii. Just send me a ticket. Thanks.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you, George Dyson. I can say everything I need to say in one sentence to those of us on the Bellingham waterfront. Jack, you were the voice in the wilderness, and we thank you forever for that. And keep at it. Don't give up. Thanks.
Thank you, George. Anybody else? Okay, we will now take a short... Oh, Jack. Oh, now, now he wants to say... Now he wants to... The floor is yours, Mr. Weiss.
What's that?
The floor is yours.
Thank you. And I purposely didn't speak this afternoon so I could get just a little bit of extra time for tonight. Sure. So, the one person that's not here tonight, outside of Roxanne, but the one person that wasn't able to make it tonight was my successor, April Barker. And I thought that my words probably would be best served by talking to her. And so, I'd like to read a letter to her that might go and help kind of describe some of my feelings. Dear Councilmember-elect Barker, First of all, congratulations on your stellar and hard fought campaign to be elected to city council. You worked nearly as hard on your campaign as I did in my two efforts. I want to share some insights that I've learned over the past eight years. I've never been part of a large family with adult siblings all over town, but if I were, it would be like the council. Like a family, most times, we respect each other, look out after one another, and generally think alike when we want to do our best for the Bellingham community. Then there are times when we don't, but that's okay. I care about this family, and I think you will, too. I could go on for hours talking about them, but instead, I will condense it down to these soundbites. Dan's commitment to learning the job and making essential connections is amazing. He has come up to speed quickly and offers intelligent insights. Even with the strong interest in this position, when his predecessor stepped down, it never surprised me to see him unchallenged in last month's election. He earned it. Pinky takes her vote seriously and genuinely listens to opposing arguments and sincerely deliberates within herself prior to a decision. She's coming into her own as a council member that the community can be proud of. Roxanne has always been gracious with her compliments and optimistic attitude for Bellingham and our programs and efforts. And while I do not participate in social media, I have been told that she takes it to a new level. Our resident walk is Professor Liliquist. His creativeness, level of detail and depth of figuring out unintended consequences of our actions is awesome and very much needed. I've learned a lot from him once I broke down the language barrier. He is so smart. He is a great resource and can be a good friend for you. Terry and I have had many love-hate issues over the years. He's a passionate guy, and when he's all in, he's all in. You could not ask for a better ally when he's on your side or a nuisance when he is not. Terry has the courage to take on tough issues from time to time, and you've got to like him for that and many other reasons. Jean is our glue, our cement, our old sticky oatmeal. Along with Terry, Jean provides institutional memory of what council or the city has done in the past. Even though a couple of us are older than him, he's kind of the big brother of our family. He's an eloquent speaker and will choose the right words when we are mourning in a community tragedy or make you roll on the floor laughing with his humor. This man has wit. As much as I have tried, I've only managed to be a half-wit compared to him. I have also served with a number of other former council members. Each has had a wildly different personality, and each has had an impact on our city. They are a great sounding board because they have the context and know what they're going through, know what you are going through. Before I move on, here's a fun parlor trick. If you want to see Jean and Terry's eyes roll to the back of their head, simply mention something about chucking it ridge. It's a hoot. The family does not stop at the council. Our staff is incredible. Marie is so helpful, so friendly, and so competent in her position. Talk to her often and have her assist you in projects you are interested in. Just don't rub it in when the Hawks beat the Broncos again in this upcoming February in the Super Bowl. Mark is the brains of our council operation. His ability to research and cut through the clutter of an issue to bring forward a clear and concise report is his specialty. Get council concurrence first, but give Mark your hardest projects to solve. He's like a human version of a search engine, but with a great friendly personality to match. He's a talented guy. And then there's Mayor Kelly. She and I have known each other for over a quarter century. Our public service stance has touched on many subjects, and some great things have evolved from the efforts. I know you'll want to do some wonderful things with her, too. She's fair and reasonable, but here's some tips to working with her. Know exactly what you want and what the benefits are. Be persistent. Don't break the bank with your idea. Realize that it might take a while to get the project onto the staff's work plan, perhaps a couple of years. Be persistent. Involve stakeholders and supporters early and let her know who they are. Give her charts and tables. She really likes charts and tables. Lastly, be persistent. It's been hard to imagine, but in the short eight years, I've been a privilege to serve with 12 council members, two mayors, and multiple department heads. In fact, out of the 13 departments, only Marty in IT and Pam in the library were running their departments when I started. April, when you start next month, the first thing you will discover is the quality and professionalism of our department heads and their staff members. Get to know the department heads. They will really help you. I cannot speak more highly of them. And then there's hundreds of staff members that you'll have the opportunity to know and work with. There are way too many ways to list here, but soon you will have to understand the value and the incredible knowledge, commitment, creativity, and passion these folks have for the city. At your first meeting, you will begin a constant process of casting votes. My rough calculation is somewhere between 600 and 800 per year. For me, that's been over 5,000 votes. I'm proud to say there's only a few votes I wish I could have taken back. My waterfront vote two years ago, however, is still solid. You will find working in the community exciting, invigorating, and at times frustrating. Yes, there are sometimes trolls will stop at nothing to get our approval for an upzone and the windfall profits that will come from our vote. Or the NIMBYs that will adamantly oppose everything that will change, anything that will change the neighborhood character, even though all previous changes have only made the character better. But it's remarkable that a majority of citizens and businesses work together with you to do important improvements for our city. I know your work in the Birchwood neighborhood has already shown you that. But the thing is, multiply that wonderful feeling by 25 neighborhoods. It's truly wondrous when we, as council members, can make important changes that improve the quality of life for all. I get all tingly or something like it at every meeting when I know I can make a difference. As I step down, this is one of many other things that I will miss. When I was in college in the early 70s, I started to collect political buttons. The one that has struck with me the most said, "Question authority." Terry, Kelly, and perhaps Jean are maybe the only ones that might remember those days. But for me, it was an important tenet. Cut through the nonsense and political posturing and focus on the facts. If the facts aren't there, then question the authority of the presenter, regardless of who it is. Some people might not like my style or me because I push back. It's not that I don't like them. It's just that they did not give me facts or were insincere with their motives. It's important not to be afraid to question authority. The council, from time to time, will make mistakes, and usually, it's because we did not question enough. Follow through with your instincts to what the right thing is for the community and be bold in demanding the truth. Occasionally, you will be put in the position to favor a neighborhood position at the expense of the community-wide precedent or interests. Even if it's in Birchwood, remember that we are elected to serve the entire community, and sometimes that might mean an individual neighborhood or interests may not get their way. At times, you will have an issue where that people will come out of the woodwork. They will provide chicken little predictions of all the bad things that will happen if we vote a certain way. Be cautious. Know what are realistic unintended consequences and what is forlash. That's a term I recently learned. It's the opposite of backlash. Forlash are unproven fears put forward in a predictive way as if they were true when it's just hyperbole. This might be the hardest part of the job, that is to both respect, but cut through those fears. Consider all the horrible things that would have happened if we installed bike lanes or started a rental safety program or banned plastic bags. The fears never came true. Lastly, I want to make a request. Please work with your colleagues in the coming years to strengthen the city's environmental record wherever and whenever you can. It could be, for example, continuing meaningful infill and land use strategies, sound transportation practices, the promotion of non-carbon-based energy, or providing necessary human social services. Look at all of our decisions through an environmental filter. We sometimes forget, and it is hard to be diligent on something that is as important as this. I have found a lot of work in the last eight years was fixing the mistakes of the past. This work was a lost opportunity. By doing it right the first time, we save money and time. And by considering the best environmental strategy as part of this decision-making process, it is easier to get it right. April, I wish you the best in these up and coming years. I guarantee you, you will have fun. I have found this community service gig an incredible privilege. I have learned so much about our city. I have experienced an amazing collection of citizens, and I've had the opportunity to work with a marvelous and dedicated professional staff. It can't get better than that. So, with that, thank you. I really appreciate it.
Okay, we're now going to take a 10-minute break. There's some refreshments out in the foyer, and we'll be back in about 10 minutes. Okay, here we go. Call the meeting back to order. We will now begin our committee meetings, and this morning, Public Works Public Safety met. Terry Bornham is the chair.
Thanks, Gene. We had two items before us today. The first was a proposed ordinance accepting the donation of Stonecrest Stormwater Facility. Alliance Properties 2000 LLC, the owner of the Stonecrest Stormwater Facility, has offered to donate this facility to the City of Bellingham. Acceptance of this donation would ensure the proper maintenance of the facility and would be consistent with the public ownership in stormwater facilities throughout the city. The city completed a Phase One environmental site assessment and a title review of the subject property. No environmental or title concerns were identified. Staff recommended that the council accept the donations by adopting the attached proposed ordinance as authorized by Chapter 4.90 of the Bellingham Municipal Code. The committee recommended approval of the ordinance, and I so move.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries six zero.
The second item before the committee today was a update on the Public Works Operations Division. They gave a real good overview of what's been going on with the Operations Division. It was for information only, and the committee.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. We will now go to City Council. We had a special meeting this afternoon at 1:00. It was a closed-record hearing to consider a petition to vacate an alley between Samish and 37th Streets, immediately south of Consolidation Avenue. After listening to the legal department, we decided, as a committee of the whole, to adopt the hearing examiner's recommendation and the compensation package of $12,493.50, and I so move. Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries six zero. Peter.
And just to, it'd be good to move the ordinance as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. And I so move the ordinance now.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six zero. We will now go to Planning, which is chaired by Jack Weiss.
Thank you, Gene. We have one item this afternoon. It was an update on the city's comprehensive plan. Staff provided us with the status of the plan that has been in the works all year, and Greg Ockott, our Assistant Planning Director, no, yes, now he's Senior Planner now, is it? He's still, okay, he's still assistant. He gave us some highlights in that we have an outreach plan that we have been implementing all year long to get the community involved in the plan update. He mentioned about the fact that there were some changes in state law, including the airport changes, and that we would need to be compatible with the airport plans. That this new plan, if you've read the old plan, then it's fairly convoluted, difficult to read. It is being completely reformatted to make it readable and clearer to understand in more lay language. It's trying to remove the outdated policies that we have. One of the issues that came up was that the Waukam County Planning Commission has decided on a preliminary vote to go against the city council's population projections that we have approved earlier this year. And Greg has provided a follow-up letter stating the reasons, the sound reasons, why we want to have the population projection that we had established that was different than what the planning commission is looking at. This will ultimately come to a head at the county council, and we will, I think the city council will have the opportunity to input at that time. The timing on this plan is that it's going before the planning commission in the next few months. The council will be seeing it in the spring. We have a June 30th deadline, and that's the time for it to be adopted, and it's a similar deadline for the county council to not only adopt ours, but the other six small cities and their own plan as well. So with that, end the committee.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. The next committee is Finance Personnel chaired by Pinky Vargas.
Thank you, Gene. We had one item in front of us today, an ordinance regarding a tax exemption for venues featuring paid live music in the downtown and Fairhaven Entertainment Districts. We have already approved this in our budget process. This is an ordinance to support live music and reduce the amount of fees paid through taxes. We had a presentation by Terry Bornham, who brought this proposal by the local venues that house live music. It is getting harder and harder to support that industry. The costs of live music are increasing dramatically, and this is something that Bellingham wants to retain as a culture. It is part of our environment, and therefore, we've proposed this ordinance, which may have a fiscal cost of about $20,000 to our budget, and it was put forth with a mixed recommendation today, and with that, I so move.
Second. Any motion been made in second? Any discussion? Michael.
Well, you know, I really do appreciate live music and some of the great venues around town, but I still can't see the reason why this set of great businesses deserves a tax exemption, and other equally good businesses, other sectors that we, you know, would like to see thrive just as much, don't deserve a tax exemption. I guess it's singling this out, as opposed to looking more broadly, that makes me at the moment not want to support this particular exemption.
Okay. Any further discussion? Jack?
I have similar concerns, but I feel like this is appropriate to do at this point. I would encourage the council, maybe just like we did with our past issue associated with, what did we have, that we were going to have a one-year look at?
I think so.
Anyway, whatever that issue was, I forget, that maybe the council might want to look at it a year from now, just to see how well that program's worked, whether or not it should be expanded to other businesses. I think that would be appropriate, because right now, the way it's written, it's in there forever.
Peter remembers. What is it?
I was just reminded, I think it was to review the smoking van.
Oh, it's the smoking van. That's right.
Smoking van.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five one. Excuse me. Thank you, Mike. Lake Waukam Reservoir Natural Resources Committee, Dan Hamels, the chair.
Thank you, Gene. We had one item before us this afternoon that's interlocal agreement regarding a creation of the Policy Board within the Watershed Resource Inventory Area Number One. I'm just going to provide a little bit of background here out of the summary statement. The City of Bellingham has been a member of the Watershed Resource Inventory Area, or WIRA One, Joint Board since 1999, and the WIRA One Salmon Recovery Board since 2004 for the purposes of engaging in collaborative watershed management and salmon recovery planning processes with other governments within the WIRA One. In 2011, the Puget Sound Partnerships Leadership Council designated the WIRA One Integrated Implementation Structure around the WIRA One Joint Board and the WIRA One Salmon Recovery Board as the local integrating organization for the Waukam Action Area. The two boards will dissolve in favor of creating the WIRA One Policy Board. So basically, this was a streamlining of taking out inefficiencies in these systems and creating one policy board. This was for information only, and that's the end of the committee.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. We now will go to executive session. We had two executive session items. The first was city enforcement action. Staff provided information on city enforcement action, information only, no action was taken. And potential litigation, staff provided information on potential litigation matter, information only, no action was taken. Now, we will go to our committee of the whole that reconvened in the afternoon. The first item was a resolutions changing 8th Street to one-way northbound between McKenzie and Harris Avenues in Fairhaven. We heard a staff report from Ted Carlson. This will be back on our agenda on January 11th, and we'll be ready for that one. This afternoon, we gave direction on the city-specific legislative agenda. Do we need to vote on that, or was direction okay? You're clear on the direction. That's all it takes, Brian. If you're clear, we're clear. Okay. Then this afternoon, we had a contract agreement with the Akamak County for an as-needed jail services. The mayor is requesting authority to enter an agreement with the Akamak County for jail services on an as-needed basis. The city may be in a situation that precludes it from using the Waukam County Jail per August 15th and November 24th letters from Sheriff Bill Elfo and Waukam County Executive Jack Lous regarding the inability of Waukam County to continue to serve the jail needs. This afternoon, we heard a report, and the committee recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six zero. The next item was a contract extension with Waukam County for jail services. This afternoon, we heard from the mayor and from Peter Raffato. And here's another one that we gave direction to, or did we actually vote on the, I can't remember.
I think, go ahead.
My understanding, at the committee, you moved on a motion to provide direction to pursue further negotiations along the lines of what the city has proposed.
Yes. That's what Peter said. That sounds good. I'll move that. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second. As you can tell, my year of being council president's almost done now. I pretty well run the gamut. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six zero one. The December, what do we have, meeting minutes from?
12/7.
12/7.
12/7. I move approval of the December 7th city council meeting minutes.
Second. Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six zero one. Mayor's report, oh, annual or new business? Terry, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, I just want to take the opportunity to thank Gene for his year of leadership. Gene, again, you've, you know, provided leadership that has been efficient and done with a sense of humor, which makes things a lot easier on a lot of difficult issues. So I just want to thank you for the hard work this year that you put in.
Thank you very much.
Can we clap?
Go ahead. Why not? Thank you very much. It is a tough job. It's not as easy as everybody thinks it is, and I'm going to enjoy sitting in Jack's chair next year, and...
And hopefully, you will get my politics along with sitting in my chair.
Well, maybe I'll be sitting where Michael is sitting. No. I want to thank all of you for tolerating me, because probably one of my harshest critics is the person that watches it on television, and that's my wife. So you guys are great compared to the stuff I give when I get home. If she's asleep, I'm okay. Okay, mayor's report. Or not?
We'll miss you.
I'm not going anywhere. I'll be right over there.
No, I mean...
Well, I won't be quiet either.
No, you won't.
No.
I'd just like to say that it has been a pleasure to work with Gene. There's something to be said for somebody who's been on the council as long as him to not get ruffled. He does not get ruffled, and I really appreciate that, Gene.
I didn't start out that way, so...
Well, I know, but that's what, however many years you've been here, done. You don't have any, I don't have any appointments to make tonight. I just wanted to say again that I've appointed Leslie Bryson as the Parks Director, Parks and Recreation Director, and I'm really excited about her taking that position, and it seemed that there was a good response from the council. And secondly, Michael brought up something about different levels of BNO tax and stuff today, and one of the things that we're planning on doing after the first of the year is going through how we generate money to the city and get into a little more depth about it. There's, you know, everything is complicated, and a lot of it's... complicated, and a lot of it's driven by the financial software we have, which doesn't always give me what I'd like, so hope you all pay attention when that request comes forward. But anyway, so there would be, there will be maybe through the Finance Committee an opportunity to talk about that.
Okay. Consider agenda?
Second.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries six zero one. Before we go to final consideration ordinance, I just want to thank the mayor, the department heads, all the city employees and the citizens of Bellingham for another great year. You know, it goes without saying. You heard it from Jack tonight. It becomes such a big part of your life, and when you're doing good for community, that's the reward you get back. When people ask, why do you do this, and why do we do what we do? We do it because we care, and we love the place we live, and we want everybody to be able to do that. So, Mayor Linville, to you and your staff and everybody here, thanks for another good year. This is year number four for you now, right? Four more years. Okay. Yes, we did that. Okay, final, and I want to also thank Elizabeth for coming on and doing a great job this year. You came in at a tough time during a lot of, lot of fun evenings, so you did a great job. So, final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill 21047, an ordinance of the City of Bellingham updating the public school facility section of the capital facilities chapter, or chart, chapter of the Bellingham Comprehensive Plan to incorporate by reference the Bellingham School District's 2015 to 2021 Capital Facilities Plan and updating Bellingham's School Impact Fee Ordinance in Bellingham Municipal Code 19.08 to be consistent with the district's new capital facilities plan.
Move third and final?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Terry Bornham?
Aye.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Gene Knudsen?
Aye.
Michael Lillquist?
No.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Jack Weiss?
Aye. Decently.
Ordinance passes five two. Roxanne Murphy excused.
Five one.
Excuse me, five one. Agenda Bill 21048, an ordinance amending Bellingham Municipal Code, Chapter 17.82, to add target area four, Fairhaven Urban Village, and target area five, Barclay Village, and to revise requirements for 12-year exemptions for affordable low-income housing.
Move third and final?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Jack Weiss?
Aye.
Terry Bornham?
Aye.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Gene Knudsen?
Aye.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Ordinance passes six zero. Roxanne Murphy excused. Agenda Bill 21054, an ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, adopting a transportation impact fee based rate and rate schedule for 2016.
Move third and final?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Jack Weiss?
Aye.
Terry Bornham?
Aye.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Gene Knudsen?
Aye.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Ordinance passes six zero. Roxanne Murphy excused. Agenda Bill 21058, an ordinance relating to historic preservation, amending the Bellingham Municipal Code Section 17.90.030, and Chapter 17.90.050, and Chapter 17.90.05.70, to add an additional property class eligible for special tax valuation, and amending Bellingham Municipal Code 2.56.050 to make it consistent with Chapter 17.90.070, and 17.90.080 of the Bellingham Municipal Code.
Move third and final?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Terry Bornham?
Aye.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Gene Knudsen?
Aye.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Jack Weiss?
Aye.
Ordinance passes six zero. Roxanne Murphy excused.
Point of order, I think the description that she read is printed incorrectly. Does that affect the ordinance at all? That number seems screwy.
No. Our council rules provide that as long as the substance, it's, I mean, we try to stay as accurate as possible, as long as the substance of the ordinance is read, it's considered a reading of the ordinance.
Okay.
Agenda Bill 21060, an ordinance amending the 2015-2016 biennial budget, providing for adoption of the mid-biennium adjustments to the biennial budget pursuant to the terms of RCW 35.34.130.
Move third and final?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Jack Weiss?
Aye.
Terry Bornham?
Aye.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Gene Knudsen?
Aye.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Ordinance passes six zero. Roxanne Murphy excused. Agenda Bill 21064, an ordinance amending Bellingham Municipal Code Sections 2.56.060, and 3.16.040 regarding duties of the hearing examiner.
Move third and final?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Gene Knudsen?
Aye.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Jack Weiss?
Aye.
Terry Bornham?
Aye.
Ordinance passes six zero. Roxanne Murphy excused. Agenda Bill 21071, an ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, assuming the rights, powers, immunities, functions, and obligations of the Bellingham Transportation Benefit District as of January 1st, 2016, as allowed by Second and Gross Substitute Senate Bill 5987, Section 302, and abolishing the Transportation Benefit District's governing board following its assumption.
Move third and final?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Gene Knudsen?
Aye.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Jack Weiss?
Aye.
Terry Bornham?
Aye.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Ordinance passes six zero. Roxanne Murphy excused. Agenda Bill 21072, an ordinance closing the Beyond Greenways Fund.
Move third and final?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? How appropriate. Jack?
This is my last vote, and I find it very poetic that I started my service to Bellingham, well, Stan kind of mentioned it, when we, when both Stan and I were appointed to the Greenways Advisory Committee, I guess in 1997, I guess it was, and this was like literally within weeks of the passage of the Beyond Greenways vote and the establishment of this particular fund. So I find it very, again, poetic that we're closing this fund now, and we've done some pretty incredible things with it, so I'll gladly support it.
Okay, roll call.
Roll call. Roll call.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Jack Weiss?
Aye.
Terry Bornham?
Aye.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Gene Knudsen?
Aye.
Ordinance passes six zero. Roxanne Murphy excused.
Okay, the next meeting of the Bellingham City Council will be January 4th, 2016, our annual reorganizational meeting. Happy holidays to all and to all a good night. Happy New Year.